Okay, so as you see the Wellness Committee, Gina Crisco is the Chair. And as you see Gina is not here. So I will be taking over. Hopefully I'll do justice to this report. The Wellness Committee, as you can see, is made up of a number of people who are really important to the school and a very wide representation of people. So you have the Chair of the Wellness Committee is Gina, but then you have Board of Education members, you have teachers, you have the nurse supervisor. We have Greg Kula, very important facilities manager. Shannon Martinello, who is not only a parent, but our school medical advisor. Mr. Kula, Jane Rodney Kitchen Supervisor, Karen Stevenger. We have parents. And all of those people add something unique to this committee, a different perspective. And as a whole, it really helps to give a good picture of what we're trying to do with wellness. We do have a wellness policy. It emphasizes the importance of creating a school environment that promotes health and well-being of students. And that is key. You know how they say, "Without your health, we don't have anything." It really is important that our students are healthy, ready to learn, come to school having been well-fed and rested and are able to really, you know, take what is being offered to them. So nutrition and physical activity are directly linked to academic achievement. We certainly believe in that. We have a wonderful physical education department. And at the same time, we always stress outside time. Every class in this building makes sure that kids get outside to exercise. And if they don't, you can walk down the hallways on the days that it's snowy or rainy or cold and see these great programs that we have been using that get kids up and active. They're really interesting and they're dancing and they're moving around. And teachers, especially in the younger grades, take movement breaks very often throughout the day. So we don't want our kids just sitting like we did, like I did, my hands folded back in the day. So many initiatives that have taken place were, one of the main ones was the suggested non-food ways for parents to celebrate in school. It used to be very common to see packages and packages of cupcakes and cookies and soda coming into school for celebrations. And that's something that we tried to get away from. For birthdays, we no longer, we have people please bring in something like a book or a bookmark or read to your child's class as opposed to all those cupcakes and cookies. Parents can complete a small craft project. They have guest readers. People donate books to the library. We had started something with a bulletin board with students' birthdays in the cafeteria. It was a bit of a distraction as everybody ran up to see when their birthday was and everybody else's birthday. So that's a possibility that we might get back into. The environmental stewards have done an amazing job. Karen Stevenger should really be commended for the work she does with the environmental stewards. They come at 7:45 in the morning. She and I started this together two years ago, but she certainly just took it over and has, and owns this. She's doing an amazing job with these kids. They're here early in the morning. Their main job was to maintain biofiltration swales. It's been difficult this year because we couldn't find them under all the snow and ice, but the kids came anyway and they did ecology projects, they worked on recycling projects. What Mrs. Stevenger has reported is this year, there were around 14 members of the environmental stewards. There was sort of a competition between environmental stewards and the student council for time. So Dr. Stevenger is thinking about having environmental stewards possibly be a subsection of the student council to kind of consolidate what's going on. They recently were in the cafeteria talking to each lunch wave about recycling. So that's a big part of what they do. The Kitchen Passes Administrative Review, that's something that Mr. Kula can tell you about. It is a comprehensive review every three years. We had last board meeting, representative who's been working with the cafeteria task force. And honestly, something about Beecher Road School, you can always learn in this building. And being on that committee, I learned so much that I never knew before. It was really quite fascinating. So that's a really important aspect that Al will tell you about a little bit more. But to pass this administrative review, it's rigorous. It's incredibly rigorous and our department received 100% compliance rating in this area, which is not easy. So many initiatives that have taken place and we really have to give credit to the Physical Education Health Department, to Sandy Simwitz, Brian Hawking, and Anthony Taddy for a lot of these initiatives. Primary school jump rope for heart, intermediate school jump rope for heart, first time ever swim for heart with sixth grade, first one in the state for elementary school, second in the state for that, the fifth grade swimming Olympics, the sixth grade field day at Bethany Community Middle School, which takes an incredible amount of planning. The sixth graders go, they meet with their Bethany counterparts who they'll be with at middle school next year. So that happened. The running club in the morning at the cornfield, number of students take place, take part in that. And Day 100, first grade physical exercise. To see all the first graders with Anthony Taddy in the gym doing 100 exercises is something to behold. So our PE Health Department really deserves a great deal of credit for these initiatives. Again, we have our members. Tools for Schools, a subcommittee of wellness. This is Mr. Kula's baby.
Taking a look at.
Taking a look at. Thank you. Sorry. I'll double back on a few things. Mrs. White said the kitchen inspection, and I don't want to belabor that too much because, again, as was pointed out, a lot of work and there's a lot of tandem partnership, superintendent's task force on the cafeteria, the wellness committee, a lot of good people doing a lot of good things. One thing that I do want to share if I haven't already is the inspector that came to Beecher from the state, and I don't want to paint a picture of a state inspector as not being friendly or workable, but very much to our surprise, she was so flowing with positive comments, starting from her reception at Beecher. She was amazed at the grounds, the staff. She observed all student lunch waves and she said they generally are having a good time in there. You can hear conversation. Yeah, you hear typical noises that you do in cafeterias, but she went, you know, and visited tables and such, and she overall was thoroughly impressed. Did we score a perfect grade? No. Unfortunately, we've got a little bit of homework to do, but overall, in what I would consider the area that we were most vulnerable with, we did receive praising remarks. And they look at things as if you say you're serving a third of a cup of whole grains, you have to show them that cup, you have to show that your staff knows the protocols and the familiarities. So again, good news in tandem with the wellness initiatives that we're bringing forth. Tools for Schools is really an offshoot of wellness. In fact, you'll see a lot of the same individuals that were on the wellness for a lot of good reasons are also served as our Tools for Schools. And these folks, like all other committee members, there is a significant amount of time invested on their part and cover a lot of pavement, about 170,000 square feet to be exact. What is Tools for Schools? It's an indoor air quality program that looks to increase the comfort of the occupants around you. Comfort is thermal temperature, overall air quality by outside pollutants. And we don't realize it, but our hairsprays, our colognes, perfumes are deemed outside Once again, this year, we did the Tools for Schools processes in years past. We started by surveying the staff. And one thing I'm very pleased at, our survey participation remained at about 52% of the staff. And in Beecher, at times, we can tend to have a lot of surveys out there. So the fact that half the staff still, while Tools for Schools is in third year, you know, it's kind of like the old shoe, but the good shoe. Glad to see that we're getting that much response. What I've noted here, the survey has about 24 questions, but as the committee got together for their last meeting to debrief and data disseminate, some of the interesting things when we first went out in 2012, 53% of the respondents said that their ceiling tiles were free, had no visible discoloration or one-time prior water entry. And the most recent survey, 82% of the respondents. Drafts have been prevented, 39% saying that's the case in 2012 to 98% in 2015. Classroom rugs, less than five years old. And this last one obviously is largely attributable to the window upgrade, the building upgrade. Can't really take that exclusively as Tools for Schools, but 97% of those that responded, and the building upgrade will continue, so we hope to see that pretty much at 100% by December of '15. What are some of the things that we're doing? We're continuing our systematic replacement of classroom rugs, making sure and by labeling them on the bottom with the year of installation, that those classroom area rugs at no time are over five years old. Installing coat hooks and floor shelves. What we were noticing as we were going into classes is that, you know, storage is at a maximum here. So teachers doing a good thing, we're trying to maximize their storage space in closets, but we weren't able to get in there and do cleaning with custodial supplies. So by elevating it off the closet, we can help control the dust bunny population. We're also introducing guidance on classroom furniture replacement. Again, it's an education item. Teachers become very much attached. Sometimes gifts are given of upholstered furniture, but upholstered furniture, like any other item, has a face life. And, you know, you can maintain it, but given the amount of use and such, we're really working on a cycle replacement plan for that as well. We continue dialogue with teacher and custodian as to what teachers need to do, what custodians do. Things like cleaning teacher desktop. Custodians don't do that for obvious reasons, but sometimes our teachers have assumed that they do. And the obvious reasons the custodians don't is for personal belongings. And then last but not least, our targeted December 15th, December building upgrade. So with that, I thank you. I hope you have a lot of questions to bring to the panel.
It's great. I know you give us periodic updates on Tools for Schools, especially in facilities. And it seems like the feedback you get is teachers welcome it, they're, you know, they participate willingly. And again, you're never going to have everybody doing everything, but it's a good program. And keeping an eye on, you know, what's coming and what needs to be replaced. We always know, you know, what we need to spend. Anybody have anything for Al or Nancy?
I want to, it was an excellent report by both committees, but I want to thank Mr. Kula in particular for Tools for School. That's an initiative that very often just fades away in schools. It's a comprehensive approach that involves a lot of representatives in the school. And Al is so respected at the state level and at our Cunipiac Valley Authority for the work that he does with the committee members and having the tenacity of following through and raising the awareness at the school. And Nancy and Gina do a wonderful job with the Wellness Committee as well as all the members. The superintendent's task force on the cafeteria is an offshot of that. And there was some fun last week and some magic in the school when our chef of the month came, as you know, and there was special vegetable treat that I was the first sampler. It was zucchini and it was excellent, really excellent.
And not at all threatening.
Not at all. The children saw me and, but the children, it was funny, there were three charts on both sides of the cafeteria. And all the children, when they came in, by the way, thanks to the PTO because they had lots of volunteers coming around with little cups to the children, serving them. And then the children, we wanted to make it a all-inclusive kind of thing. So they all had stickers and they could go up and vote. I liked it, I didn't like it, or kind of neutral. And it worked pretty well, except for our kindergarten first grade children, they didn't want to give up their stickers. So I don't know if that tainted the process. But the other part of my report has to do with something extremely important, was a major district and school board goal, and that was our math program. This has been a year of study. I can't compliment our staff enough and our administrators for their widespread involvement with this focus on mathematics. In particular, we had two leaders emerge, of course, they have the title of math specialist, but they emerged as leaders that exceed that role, and that's Jim Malo and Maureen Crowick. They have really dedicated so much time during after-school weekends. They, they're just fabulous. And they went out to and volunteered to go for a three-day study of mathematics in Weston, another high-performing district, just to see the dues that are happening over there and the dons and things like that. And they came back so enthused that their enthusiasm was contagious and spread throughout the school. So it was really a wonderful year. And the conclusion was a three-day visit by a group of 14 educators. I have to tell you personally, I and many of us were very impressed with the quality of the people that came here and from far and wide, many from out of state. There were assistant superintendents and curriculum directors and some I knew in person, some by name, very high caliber. I was so proud that members of our student council welcomed them, our co-chairs and working with our administrators organized the school so well and the program so well. It was an attempt to have a 360 degree kind of, not evaluation, but a review of our program because our 14 visitors served as thought partners in helping us to begin to plan where at the beginning and will happen during the summer, of a two-year plan to take our math program to a higher level. One of the first compliments that Marty Brooks, the executive director, said to the whole group was that he really commended the school and the school district on taking a chance and bringing so many educators in at the beginning of the chapter. Because very often they'll visit school districts at the end of a chapter and all the ducks will line up in a row, ready. And we wanted them to just meet with children and parents and administrative, school board members and so on, and to help us with our first steps, to think aloud. So I would ask, Gina and Maureen have given generously of their time and given coming here this evening for another board meeting, so I'd like to share some of their thoughts about the visit.
Hey, everyone. Well, Gina and I first wanted to start out by saying thank you to everyone, you know, tri-state is a team effort. So we wanted to thank the secretarial staff, custodial staff, the cafeteria staff, and the technology center, and all the faculty and staff. It's everyone coming together to do this work and it was a really rewarding visit. We feel that it really brought the school together in talking about math and having some really good conversation that we are now really ready to move on to the next step. So we thought we'd talk a little bit about the visit and what happened, so you can kind of have a little sense of those three days. So as Dr. Stella said, there were 14 educators who came from New York, New Jersey, and various towns in Connecticut, classroom teachers, math specialists, administrators, and then the two tri-state directors. And we spent a lot of time getting ready for their visit. We fed them, we fed and watered them daily. We gave them badges and parking passes and crumb cake and all of this.
Every day. And Sheila.
We really prepared a lot. We started the day, the first day with a presentation from Dr. Stella, and then that was followed by a presentation by the two of us. We, with Rick Wood, prepared a website especially for the visitors. And the website had videos, it had photographs, it had access to various links to curriculum, assessments, spreadsheets, lots of student work. So they were able to access all of that during their visit. We set them up with a Google Doc so they were able to work on iPads, which the tech department also provided. And so we tried to make their experience as comfortable and as workable as we could. The students, the parents, and the teachers have all taken surveys and we wanted to thank the community for taking part in those. And those were also there as evidence, as part of the indicators for parent communication. And then the visitors did interview all the grade-level teachers, the administrators, and student representatives from grades two through six. We'd also like to thank student council. It was nice to have greeters from student council there every morning. The children were so excited. They came dressed in little suits and all dressed up and they greeted everyone every morning and brought them down to the rotunda where they needed to go. So it was really nice. And one of the things was that, you know, the visitors even complimented on how warm they were received and how welcome they felt here for the three days. And the teachers also felt, you know, I think the faculty and staff felt that the visitors too were, they felt like everybody was really good listeners and, you know, we're looking forward to that report to get it back and feel like we're going to get really good feedback moving forward. So yeah, the visitors interviewed all the grade-level teachers, representatives from the student body, board members. They also visited every classroom and were able to see what was going on during math, the math period. And so they found that to be very valuable, I think. They also had eight boxes of documents and evidence to go through, which we had organized by indicator, as is the tri-state protocol. So there were, there was a box on curriculum, there was a box on assessment, there was a box on special education. There were eight different boxes and they were filled with lots and lots of material that we had submitted, the whole faculty had submitted. So there was a lot to look through. They were very, very busy. And, you know, and then at the, at the end of the visit, we had a consultancy where we had teacher, faculty representatives sit and talk about, answer some questions, and then we listened to the tri-state people talk about what their first impressions were. And then on the last day, we had a debrief with the administrators. So we're really looking forward to the report. We're hoping that we're going to get a lot of good information. We're looking forward to our commendations and our recommendations. And we'll take it from there. One of the things that really stood out for us, and it's one of the things in the, you know, their feedback in the consultancy, we've worked really hard on the curriculum and it was really nice to hear that we're, it's aligned, we're ready to go and we're like ready for those next steps. So that was really nice for us to hear and for the faculty to hear. So we're excited about it.
When do you think you'll hear it?
We're hoping like the middle of July. Usually takes like six, eight, six weeks, they said, so.
We'll have a leadership meeting during the summer. We'll have to figure out who's on vacation, who isn't, we'll have a chance to go through it. But then we want to involve the whole staff in using that as a way of developing an action plan. And again, I'll repeat, one of the major messages in the closure was that they felt we were really primed and ready to make a giant step forward as far as a new chapter in mathematics education. Just as they'll make recommendations, a number of them inside conversations said, "We're going to bring this back to our school or that back to our school." And that's why I endorse and encourage tri-state because it gives us, it gives us a consortium, a group of educators that are constantly, have learning communities that are constantly looking to have high-quality schools. We can't thank these two educators enough.
Thank you.
The school is the district, district is the school. We have so many teachers who are involved in so many committees, actually a small number of teachers considering the number of committees and give so generously of their time without any pay, with really a sense of dedication. And you two have gone above and beyond in service. We'd like to present you a little certificate as a symbolic way of saying thank you.
Thank you.
So we're kind of going up. Did you want to do the open choice one now?
Yeah, open choice, let's do that. Yeah, we have, there's a marshal, 12 children right now from open choice. That's part of our interracial plan that we've had for a number of decades. And that number was approved by the board, I believe, last February. ACE has contacted us, they asked for our support in support of the board in adding another kindergarten child. And that's because of a family situation, a sibling. And I think it would be a service to the family, the child who's already here, and to ACE's who has always been very supportive of us. I don't believe it will affect negatively our enrollment at all or class size. So I'm asking the board to please approve an additional slot.
Do you have that motion?
Move that we authorize an additional kindergarten slot for the open choice program for the 2015-2016 school year.
Is there any discussion? Lisa or Stella? If you could just elaborate a little bit on what their process is otherwise, like why was this child not otherwise put in the school? And how often do they ask us for?
Well, this is the only time since I've been here they've asked for an additional child and there was some paperwork problem and it would have affected the families splitting that. So it's not unusual for us that this happens. Does that answer your question?
Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor? Okay.
Thank you very much. If I may, as part of my report, I'd like to acknowledge our new assistant principal, who will be starting July 1st, Annalisa Sherman, who's with us. She's anxious to get going, doing her homework already. And Claire Kennedy is going to be my recommendation for special ed director, she's here with us. I have so much work to do, I better stop.
Okay. So all of these are, okay, new business, all right. So facilities.
I'm going to keep my report very brief because Dr. Stella hit on most of it already, but that's a point of rate.
I have that habit.
We met on June 4th. We received an extensive upgrade, upgrade update about what has been completed, what will be completed in the summer and what potentially will remain for the fall. We also received an update on the state grant submission from Al and Steve Grant and to summer programs and also buildings and grounds project status, which was largely involved with the upgrade. Our next meeting is July 2nd.
There's no committee meeting this summer?
Our next meeting is September.
Thank you, Marsha. Should I cry? I have a hard hat, if you want to come around, we'll all go together and take pictures.
Okay. So building upgrade, we've gotten reports on finance. We had a 10-minute meeting because there were so many other meetings going on, but we went through the reports. Al gave us a very, very high-level summary. And we always go through those reports before the meeting, so if there wasn't anything else on the agenda. And, okay. You got nothing? All right. All right, new business. We have a lot of new business. Go ahead, Dr. Stella.
Okay. We've been working hard as far as staffing, we've been in a number of retirements this year, so we're proposing.
You've got the primary mental health grant first.
I'll be back up a little bit. Primary health grant.
Move that we approve the 2015-16 primary mental health grant for submission to the Connecticut State Department of Education.
Now, Dr. Stella, do you want to tell us what that is?
Yes.
Or Sheila? Thank you.
We are actually, I think in our 18th year of primary mental health grant, we are groundbreakers always in primary mental health project. So this year, we have submitted a grant again and it, I will be sending your approval to the state department. But what this does, as always, is supports our child play, our child associates who are extremely well-trained, not only through who are extremely well-trained, not only through the staff here, but also by attending the state department workshops. It really supports our interconnections with the preschools in Woodbridge, and that's really been a major focus for the last few years, and it really has blossomed. We're really excited about the interactions that we're having throughout the community with preschools. Also, our family team. And so that's bridging school services, families, and community services when families need them. So those are our major areas of focus.
And that is wonderful work, so I appreciate your support. Okay, any questions? Okay, all those in favor? All right, great. Now you can talk about resignations.
Certified staff, we have one resignation, a teacher formerly on maternity leave for personal reasons, and would regret his resigning, but she wrote a lovely letter of thanks.
And everybody has that in a packet. Do you want to make a motion?
We accept the resignation of Stephanie Elec, effective June 3 of 2015, with regret.
Okay. All right, and everybody has the letter in their packet, too. Okay, yeah. All right, so she's not coming back, she's staying there? Oh, none of my business. All right.
Finish the vote, all.
Yeah, we have to. All those in favor?
You missed the button.
I'm sorry.
Ready for the next one?
Yep.
Okay, so we've been very busy at school, and very thankful again to our teachers and administrators, because we've had a number of interviewing committees, just going through the numerous applicants for each of our jobs here. And so we would like to propose the names of four teachers, two classroom teachers, Karen Calabrese and Morgan McLean, kindergarten first grade, and also for the technology position, Danielle Ullaco, for the halftime art position, Ashley Wagner.
Okay. So do they like to make that motion with those names?
I'll try. Move that we ratify the appointment of Lori Calabrese, Morgan McLean, and Danielle Ullaco, each at a salary of $49,399, MA Step 3, and Ashley Wagner at a salary of $23,622.50, BA Step 3, all effective July 1, 2015.
Good job. Second?
Oh, you slipped.
All right, so you said that's a kindergarten, a first grade, tech, and art. Any other questions for Dr. Stella? All those in favor? Thank you. Okay. So we did the primary health certified staff. Okay, so I think if we're done with that, we're going to go into executive session.
Move to go into executive session.
Okay. Do we have to say all those in favor? All those in favor? Okay, so we're going to go into, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Tu me reals.